The regular meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee tonight, May twenty second at six oh two P M. If you would, everyone, um, you can mute, but join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good call on the flag, Shandor.
I need to designate that as a job. Um. I do see that Karen is trying to get in, so hopefully she'll be able to join us shortly. Uh, so looking at our agenda here. We have citizens' comments first. And I have not received any interest from the public informally engaging in citizens' comment. So we're going to move on to our next item here. And um, just a little bit in advance of six oh seven, but that's okay. Uh, we're uh scheduled to have an executive session to separate uh purposes, although they're similar. And I'm going to lean on Amy Cohen to give us. Well, hold on one second. Uh Kirk, we're going to need to ex- to say both of the pursuant statements. Is that right?
That is correct. You will need to say both.
Okay. Okay, Amy, go for it.
All right, I move to enter into executive session at six oh four P M. Pursuant to M G L chapter thirty A, section twenty one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel for unit A grievances. Executive session A to include the school committee Superintendent Kirk Downing, Emery Stoyka, Kevin Kevany, Mike Tollison, and Maura LaPointe. Execution, executive session B to include the school committee Superintendent Kirk Downing, Emery Stoyka, Kevin Kevany, Mike Tollison, and Brittany Jones. The committee will reconvene to open session.
I'll second that. And any discussion? All right, we're going to take a roll call vote. I will start. I say yes. Joe?
Yes, ah, yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Thanks, Dana. Scott?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I think I got everybody? Screen jumped. All right, everybody, we are.
Okay, so do I need to read this all again and list?
Yes, yes, please.
Modify it. Okay. I move to enter into an executive session at six eleven P M pursuant to M G L chapter thirty A, section twenty one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations to contract negotiations with non-union personnel for unit A grievances. Executive A session to include the school committee Superintendent Kirk Downing, Emery Stoyka, Kevin Kevany, Mike Tollison, and Kristen Marino. Executive session B to include school committees Superintendent Downing, Emery Stoyka, Kevin Kevany, Mike Tollison, and Brittany Jones. The committee will reconvene to open session.
I will second that. Thank you, Amy. Um. Joe, do we need discussion? Sorry.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna ask is, who's Maura LaPointe? Is she not going into this, into this session?
She is not currently present. It doesn't look like, but she perhaps will join us.
She was listed on the motion.
I did not miss her, so let me, let me, let me include Maura. Um, executive session A also to include Maura La Pointe. I'm so sorry. It's even more complicated.
That's okay. So I am, I seconded the motion and I am happy to accept that friendly amendment.
Thank you.
To include Maura LaPointe. Okay, and so if there's no further discussion, I'm going to take the vote myself. I say yes, Joe?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Uh Jackie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Uh, Amy Cohen?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yes.
Okay, so we are now in executive. I will apologize to the community if they were keeping track of our timeline. Um, we are a little bit behind here with the executive session lasting a little bit longer than normal, so we do have our regular agenda to attend to. We're just a tad behind. So picking back up, um, we are going to move on to the consent agenda, and I wonder if Amy Cohen could give me a motion on the consent agenda? Oh, you're muted. Yep. Thanks, Amy.
Yep, sorry about that. I moved to approve the consent agenda of May twenty second, twenty twenty four, containing draft minute meetings, meeting minutes of May eighth, two thousand twenty four, and warrants of May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing them, we'll take the vote. Joe?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Jackie?
Yes.
Shandor? Was that a yes, Shandor?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Mike?
Yes.
Scott? Did I lose Scott? Oh, yeah, I did. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Karen? Sharon, can you hear me? Consent agenda, would you like to vote on the motion?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Did I get everyone? It's jumping around. Okay, everybody. So um, the motion passes. We're going to move on to the next item here, and there's the school committee chairperson update. So I just have a brief update. It is actually related to one of our subcommittee reports, but um, I will share it now. The school committee is um, looking to at our next meeting, identify the membership of our advisory committee called Dear J. And in the superintendent's common, uh, which is his weekly newsletter, uh, it was explained how we would appreciate any residents who are interested in joining this advisory, which serves the school committee, and making sure that all of our actions are um, adhering to our statement on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, and with the strategic plan. And so if you are interested in being a member of Dear J for the next school year and uh, helping to forward the mission of that group and of our committee, please email me at L Viverito at N R S D dot net to send me a letter of intent, which does not necessarily need to be um, extensive. You should just tell me that you are interested and why, and how your background might be a good addition to the group. Uh, at this point in time, I will let the community know that I, based upon the comment, um, from last Friday, I do have seven interested people who are willing to serve on the committee, which is a great number. So um, if you feel like you are a little too busy for this, but you hope the mission carries on, uh, fear not, there are seven fantastic residents who are going to carry it on. So, that being said, let's move on to uh, the next item on our agenda is the student representative report. But Kirk, I'm not seeing our student reps.
Yes, not surprising.
Busy, busy, busy. Um, so that's okay. We will keep going here uh, and move on to our superintendent's report. He has a couple of announcements and some updates on strategic work.
And, and our team knows, uh, Madam Chair, given the timeline is the evening, we will give you some truncated reports without get uh, losing any of the meat. Uh, we want to make sure you have the good stuff. Um, last week, we sent out an announcement to Nishoba Regional High School families and the families of our middle schools, specifically eighth grade families regarding manganese that's been detected in the water source for Nishoba Regional High School. Uh, that uh, sample was taken uh, in January and March of this year. We received notification uh, from Whitewater um, Water and Wastewater Solutions on May seventh, uh, with instructions on notifying our community within thirty days uh, of, of the, the testing. It's important to note uh, that manganese itself is naturally in water. Uh, these are elevated levels for which we have never tested higher uh, than, than the threshold in the past. So this is a new phenomenon for us. And uh, part of that uh, requirement from Mass D E P is that we put together an action plan, which Mr. Friesbook will be uh, working on that, um, as well as notifying our community. Uh, so we also put out the literature about manganese in the water that uh, drink in the water itself uh, is, is not dangerous, say, in, in a single or minimum usage, but repeatedly over a period of time could have some negative effects. So this is something we want to um, monitor. I want you to know that we are, I've already put out a request to test the bubbler water because all of our bubblers do have filters and carbon filters on them. So we want to uh, now test directly from the tap source. That's part of our, our plan. So we get that data back. Um, and so uh, with that, uh, just want to let the committee know that we're following all the regulations of Mass D E P and their notifications to us. While that testing was done on March twenty sixth, we received instructions at that time to pause uh, as they prepare notifications for us uh, to notify the community. So that's what we did. We received their information on May seventh, and were able to uh, get it out to our community within the week. So uh, with that, Madam Chair, before we go to the next piece, I just want to take any questions from the committee. I did ask uh, Mr. Friesbook to be here as well as Ms. Wicker, in case there are any questions from the committee.
Okay, so um, this is specific to the high school. So uh, yep, so let's go over to Amy Cohen.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could explain um, the timeline a little bit more because it looks like the samples were taken in January.
Yeah.
But notification wasn't really provided for a few months after that. Do you know why that was?
They do multiple samples. It was taken in January and then again in March. We were notified at the end of March. In that notification, they said, uh, we will be preparing notification for you, for your community. Please wait. And so we followed their instructions. They sent that to us on May seventh. And so uh, after that, because when it comes to, to water quality, we have to follow Mass D E P's instructions quite strictly. So um, now that we have that, we move forward with the plan.
So could we assume that since the D E P didn't get back to us until May that they, there wasn't an urgent need to react, right?
That's, that's exactly. There, there was no danger or sense of urgency where we needed to do that.
Okay.
But you're saying that carbon filtration is very likely capable of managing this?
No, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is we have carbon filtered bubblers. Um, we're just having the bubblers tested to see if it's addressing it. Uh, Mr. Friesbook, I'll, I'll turn that question over to you.
Thanks, Superintendent. Um, carbon, carbon media um, isn't really effective for reducing the amount of manganese in the water. Um, it could do it a little bit. Um, you know, that's why we're going to do some field tests to see if the water filling stations at the high school, um, because those have carbon filters in them, um, see if it reduces the amount of manganese in them, get a baseline, um, and then we can, you know, take further action at that point.
So I'm assuming that this kind of testing could take, Rob, a couple of weeks to get that baseline and then to kind of test for safety?
Field tests, when whitewater gets on site, the field test, we'll be able to get results immediately once they get the field test done. So we'll know on those water filling stations whether that carbon um, is filtering out the manganese. Um, we do, right now, we're going to increase the raw water sample, which that's the sample taken directly from the well. We're going to increase that to monthly so we can get a baseline. Up to this point, uh, well, up till January, we've never had a detective manganese in the water system. Um, so it's kind of an anomaly. So we want to get some baseline numbers um, and more frequent testing to see where things are going, if they're trending up or if they're trending down, um, so we can put a, you know, proper action plan in place going forward.
So we're grateful to you on this front, and uh, we thank D E P obviously for um, conducting this testing. Uh, I think that what parents are worried about is, I know that you had a plan for how the kitchen was handling it with, um, you know, fruits and vegetables are to be used. We need to use bottled water to wash them, et cetera. And so I understand the kitchen is managing it. Um, there was a concern brought to us that, that said that, uh, you know, with the hot temperatures in this building is just, you know how I feel about it. Um, it's hot and the kids, you know, not all of them bring water bottles or they run out and then they can't refill. So what's the plan for making sure that hydration is not a, a problem? I know the sports teams are bringing, I mean, yesterday I saw them bring a huge bucket of water out, so I'm not sure where they got that water. Like, what's, what's the plan there?
Yeah, as we have that advisement, uh, we'll work with Dr. Boynton and team. They have bottled water there at the high school. We'll make sure if a child needs water, we get the water. Um, and so um, uh, Dr. Boynton will set up that procedure uh, at the high school. We'll get that out to them.
That would be great. Yeah, and, and Kirk, do you plan on sending out, um, now that this school committee has heard um, your complete report here, and we've heard from Rob, and, and you're kind of devising, um, some remediation here for the hydration piece? Can you send out an email or maybe update the community, maybe by Friday?
Sure.
On this?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that? All right, everybody, uh, moving on to um, more exciting stuff, and that is our strategic work. So Kirk, I'll turn it over to you again.
Uh, yeah, and tonight you're going to see a presentation about the K to five uh, English Language Arts and Literacy Curriculum Review Report. So I think uh, Madam Chair, um, rather than talk about that here, we'll just address that when we get to new business around the K to five literacy.
Yes, I did notice that that was a duplicate, duplicate on the agenda. So you're ready to move into new business?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, so guys, on to new business, and um, we have, we are lucky to hear tonight from Scott Blanchard and understand his entry plan findings and hear his report. So Kirk, I'll let you queue it up.
Yeah, I would like to introduce Mr. Scott Blanchard. He's our fabulous principal at Mary Rollinson Elementary School, and this is his uh, first year. He came and, and told the committee about what his intentions are to learn about the school and the community this year, and he's here to report back on those findings. So Mr. Blanchard, take it away.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing, and uh, thank you to the school committee uh, for having me tonight and providing me with this opportunity to present my findings. Um, before I begin, I also want to thank the M R A community at large, the students, staff, and families for their feedback and support through this process. Um, I'd like to say thank you, uh, my administrative assistant Jennifer Fromer and my assistant principal Steve Grant, who are uh, excellent thought partners uh, for me through this process. Um, I want to thank again Superintendent Downing and Assistant Superintendent Friend for their ongoing encouragement and support uh, in my first year as principal. And I'd like to thank Sean O'Shea for his mentorship and guidance over the last nine years, um, that I feel has really prepared me to take on this role uh, as principal. Back when I started this process a year ago, I wanted to be sure that, having been here at Mary Rollinson for eight years, that I really examined this uh, the school and its needs um, with an objective lens. Uh, I didn't want to make any assumptions about uh, what our strengths are, what our areas of priority are, or the kind of leader I need to be in order to help us achieve our goals. Um, so with that in mind, I drafted this entry plan and um, which I, I hope to summarize for you uh, right now. Um, so uh, in the first, uh, do I have to share my screen? Can you guys see the slideshow?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, do I have to share that with you guys?
Yeah, you can certainly do that, or Alita could as well. Whatever's easier.
Scott, I got it.
You got it? Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Alita.
Okay, so the first intended outcome was to understand the impact of our communication systems at M R A and the degree to which they build strong partnerships with families and how we might improve them. So some common themes that emerged are that um, parents and caregivers really value transparency. Um, they want to know about student learning outcomes, uh, but they also want to know about our priorities as a learning organization and uh, our school-wide initiatives. Um, they uh, are looking for opportunities also for the homeschool connection. Uh, we've received feedback from parents who uh, reported just being able to, they enjoyed knowing what was going on in the classrooms day to day and had, being able to have conversations with their children uh, at home at night in order to be able to um, reinforce and support the learning that was going on at school. Um, so our considerations for next steps will be to continue to gather feedback from families about uh, the effective ways uh, we can communicate with them, uh, to provide them that information, to potentially identify exemplars uh, that are already being used in the building for uh, home communication and sharing those with others so that um, uh, we can have some consistency. To that end, we also want to create some common expectations in the building around uh, the types of things that are being communicated and how they're being communicated, and also um, to continue to use, utilize our online platform such as Thrill Share uh, for the communications. They need to be more timely. We've received a lot of positive uh, feedback this year, particularly about that tool, uh, and how we've used it to get messages out when needed. Outcome two is to understand the ways in which our process for communicating student progress impacts student learning and growth. Uh, the interesting thing about this one was, uh, as I was trying to see if there was a direct correlation between uh, how we communicate student learning outcomes, uh, what was the effect that it had? And I, I didn't find a direct correlation between uh, the communications and the outcomes, uh, how it affects the outcomes. But what I did uncover was that uh, in order for teachers to prepare to have these conversations with families, uh, it connects very directly with the P L C work that we've uh, been engaging in. Specifically, um, in preparing for those communications, uh, it behooves us to, to really look at the four questions that drive the P L C work. What, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? How will we know that they've learned it? What will we do? Uh, how will we respond? Uh, if they haven't learned what we intended, and how will we enrich and extend the learning for those students who have demonstrated mastery? Um, so in the process of preparing ourselves to have these um, effective conversations with parents about student learning and student learning outcomes, what it does is it reinforces and strengthens our uh, our P L C process, and there's a direct connection there. Um, it also, what it also does is it helps uh, reinforce the three big ideas of the P L C, which are uh, focus on student learning, results orientation, and collaborative culture. So for our next steps, uh, I think we're going to be looking at uh, developing systems for communicating with students about their learning. Uh, I'd like to involve them in the process and extend that communication piece beyond uh, families and uh, talk to kids about it and, and have them set goals for themselves. Um, so that they understand their learning and where they're headed, and, and they can contribute and have a voice in that, in that conversation about um, you know, what they want their outcomes to be. Um, we're going to continue to support teachers with uh, data analysis processes and um, using our universal screen reports um, to understand the student learning outcomes and, and communicate those out. And uh, we've also been thinking about an idea of having some student learning data nights potentially, um, to invite parents in and to talk to them about the reports uh, that we share with them and what those mean, and see if they have any questions, just to, you know, build a better understanding so that we can engage them in uh, some thoughtful conversation about it. Intended outcome three is to examine the development of our P L C and determine how I can best support our staff in their capacity to effectively implement the process and to understand the why behind the work. Some common themes that arose there are, uh, first, that understanding the why is important. Uh, we did a lot of work this year around implementation of P L Cs, and the teachers have all been working hard in, in learning um, the procedures uh, and just the, the way of doing things uh, in a professional learning community. And uh, through it all, uh, they've remained very open, and they've asked some good questions, and um, they've really been engaged in the process, and I thank them very much for that. Uh, in addition, our coaches have been excellent uh, support to us in uh, in our first year of implementation. In addition, uh, we have looked at shared leadership. Uh, this year I, I formed a guiding coalition uh, for our school and uh, a guiding coalition of teacher leaders uh, to help with the P L C implementation. Uh, and the first thing that we did, the first two big jobs we accomplished were, we created a new mission and vision uh, for Mary Rollinson, which I'll be rolling out um, and sharing with the community soon. The academic impact that we're seeing as a result of this work is that uh, seventy one point seven percent of our students met or exceeded growth targets in reading so far this year. Seventy two point three percent have met or exceeded growth targets in math, and seventy seven point nine have met or exceeded growth targets in early literacy skills. Our considerations for next steps include um, really focusing on that fourth question of uh, the P L C work, which is how do we uh, enrich and extend the learning for students who demonstrate mastery? Um, each year, I feel like we build on that a little bit at a time. Um, but next year, now that we have some other pieces in place, I really want to focus on, on that aspect of it. Uh, we're continuing to examine and determine what our essential standards are for E L A and math uh, in our grade level teams. Another area that we want to focus on for next year is uh, the writing of common formative assessments, um, so that uh, teachers have a, a clear understanding of you know, as they're, as they're trying to answer that second question, how do we know if they've learned it? Um, the common formative assessments really help uh, them determine A, what are the, what are the learning targets that we're trying to gather data on, and does the assessment that we're giving the students really give us the information that answers that question for us? Um, so common formative assessment, that, that process of building those um, will, will help with that. Uh, I'm also looking to, again, share the leadership uh, to lead the meetings with teachers and have them facilitate and set the agenda. Um, this year, uh, it was, I did a lot of it. Uh, um, Steve Grant did a lot of it. Our coaches did a lot of that. Um, but I'm really looking to transition that and hand it over to the, to the teachers for next year. Um, and also I want to develop our guiding coalition as P L C experts that can act as models and, and, and support implementation uh, going forward. Outcome four is to analyze our S E L data to determine the social, emotional learning priorities and to understand the impact of our practices on our students' well-being. Some common themes are, from the beginning, um, you know, as, as far back as uh, the winter of twenty twenty two, uh, grit and emotional regulation uh, came up as priority areas for us. The areas we scored the lowest, um, back uh, in the winter of twenty two. Um, students had forty five percent favorable um, responses to questions involving grit and fifty one percent favorable responses to um, questions related to emotional regulation. Um, so we've been engaging in uh, some initiatives at the school level, at the grade level um, level, and at the classroom level to um, address these things. Uh, and as a result, our grit has increased uh, by ten points, which is the biggest gain of any of the areas um, that's assessed through panorama, and our emotional regulation scores have increased by four points, which is the second highest amount. Um, so there's, there's still some work to do there, but we are seeing um, steady growth. Some considerations for next steps include um, continuing our work with Dr. Epstein uh, in embedding that calm compassionate teaching and those strategies uh, in our day-to-day work. Um, expanding on the current initiatives that we have, um, for instance, our third grade right now is piloting a, a um, an initiative that they're doing i- in the grade level to um, to address grit specifically with all the students uh, mixed up throughout the grade level, and it seems to be working pretty well. So we'd like to take things like that and um, potentially expand them to other grade levels in the future. Um, I want to do a deep dive into the panorama data to look not only at the uh, each domain, but what are the questions specifically uh, within that domain that are being asked, and how are students responding them, so that we can have a, a more specific picture about how students are responding to uh, the different prompts and what that could mean for them and what they need. We're going to continue uh, to build our sense of community uh, and uh, reinforce our S E L with all school meetings next year, uh, held on a regular basis. And uh, in the fall, we're, in conjunction with our P T O, we're going to have a kindness week. Outcome five is to engage stakeholders uh, in order to define our current priorities for school safety and evaluate how we're addressing. Common themes uh, with safety are i- in the early, earlier this year, I went and I visited uh, all the classrooms and spoke to the kids uh, about things that they thought we were doing well, and about things that they thought we were doing well and areas that they felt needed our attention. And again and again, the students reported that they feel safe here at MRE, that the adults in the building help keep them safe. In addition to that, I would say that our staff here is diligent always. We don't have many incidences that, that require kind of an intervention. But when things do come up, when, when there is a question that could involve safety of the building or the people, then it, they react and respond appropriately and very quickly. So they know what to do and, and, and they know what steps to take. And thank goodness, we don't have to do it that often. Some areas for improvement, those still continue to be the limitations of our PA system in that we have areas of the building that are noisy, such as the cafeteria when it's full of students, the band room, places like that where it's hard to hear the all call system. So if, if a message needs to go out related to school safety, some, it's hard to hear in those areas sometimes. So we're looking at ways that we can potentially improve communication in those areas that are noisy and also areas where it's hard to hear the PA system like outside of the classes outside for recess or PE or something. And then also our use of the chat. We have a school safety chat that we use whenever we do these drills in practice so that we can silently communicate to one another about what's happening. And we need to just get better at embedding that into our, it needs to become second nature to us. So when something happens, we're doing a drill or whatever, that we're, we're immediately jumping on that chat and we're using that to, to communicate. So next steps are we'll continue to debrief and reflect after drills. The staff always have great comments and suggestions and thoughtful questions after those drills that help us, you know, pinpoint areas for, for improvement. We're going to include next year through the work of our, our Lancaster Safety Committee. We've decided that we're going to include regular time in staff meetings next year for discussing scenarios. So throwing a scenario out there to the teachers, having them talk about it in small groups. How would you, how would you respond? What do you think? And what questions come up for you around this? And then opening, opening it up to the, the bigger group to share ideas and, and, and responses to those. Just to keep them in, in the habit of thinking about these things and appropriate responses based on what they're faced with. Like I said, we're, we're hoping to explore some options for potential visual supports in those areas that get loud and it's hard to hear the PA system. We want to make sure that our, all of our substitute teachers are informed. So we'll have to put a process in place for that to make sure that we have subs entering the building. If something were to happen, they know how to respond appropriately. And then again, embedding that use of the chat for communication whenever a situation like this comes up so that it becomes second nature. Outcome six is to understand MRE's strengths as a learning community and to identify priorities for continued growth and improvement. So to begin with, our strengths are of course, our wonderful students. They're curious. They're joyful. They're amazing individuals and you know, we're lucky to be working with them each and every day. We have dedicated staff here at MRE who I'm proud to work with on a daily basis. Our parents are very much involved and you know, seek opportunities to become as involved as they can be and to be really good partners with us in, in the work that we do. So those are our strengths. Some of our priorities, as you'll see listed there, came out of conversations I had a year ago with staff when I found out I was going to become MRE's next principal. I sought to meet with every member of our staff and to, to ask them a couple of questions about what do you see as our strengths? What are the areas that need our attention and how I can support them individually? And then the themes that came out of those conversations, I was able to speak to ninety percent of the staff at the time. And from those, some themes emerged and the themes are sense of community, communication, admin presence in the classrooms and clear expectations for student learning and behavior. So to address those, we've done some things this year. In the next section, I'll show you some feedback that I got recently from teachers about how they feel those things are going. But based on all the information that we've gathered over the course of the year, to address sense of community, again, we're looking to have all school assemblies on a regular basis next year to bring everyone together. We did a buddy classroom initiative this year where classrooms from different grid levels were partnered up. Classrooms that wouldn't necessarily get together for any reason in particular, just so that they could learn about each other and, and come together and have activities and build community that way. And work on increasing our sense of relational trust. You know, our sense of community isn't going to improve the way we wanted to until everybody feels comfortable and confident with that relational trust piece. In addition, communication, we're going to continue our weekly newsletter to staff, which is the MRE Memo. Big thanks to Steve Grant for bringing that to MRE this year. It's been invaluable tool. We've gotten tons of positive feedback about it. And I'd like to leverage our teacher leaders and our guiding coalition to be a vehicle for communicating things to staff when need be. So if staff have questions, it doesn't necessarily have to be me or Steve that they go see. But it could be one of these teacher leaders or members of the guiding coalition might have information and be able to facilitate those conversations. For administrator presence in classrooms, I've signed up for breakthrough coaching, which some of our principals in the district have engaged in. I'm signed up to go in September. I'm very excited about this because it's very important for me to be in classrooms and I did not feel this year that I, I was able to do that as much as I wanted to and through breakthrough coaching. My understanding is that I'll have at least two days a week, every week dedicated to, to being in classrooms. So I'm excited about that possibility and that's in September. And then clear expectations for student learning and behavior. We want to revisit our code of conduct. We want to make sure that the teachers have it and have a chance to sit down and look at it and ask questions about it. In terms of our expectations for behavior, in terms of our expectations for learning, we're going to continue work, as I said, on our essential standards and writing learning targets and success criteria based on those essential standards. That's going to be a big drive for next year. We're going to continue to, with our schoolwide heart of a husky initiative that we started this year, where celebrating the things that, that kids are doing to be positive members of our, of our school community. And again, the all school assemblies. And then lastly, seven is to engage stakeholders to determine how I can best serve the MRE community and our collaborative efforts to achieve our goals. So common themes from that are that MRE is a great place to be. It really is. I'm super excited to be here. I'm very excited that my, my daughters get to go to school here, that I'm a member of the Lancaster community. We've gotten lots of positive feedback from families I have over the course of the year through listening sessions and conversations and things like that. And there's evidence of it in, in the day to day, just walking down the halls and, and seeing the work that the kids are doing and, and the experiences that they're having. Collaboration is also going to be important. Specifically, not just among staff, but also collaboration with families and collaboration with students. And, and that of course is built on the whole notion of transparency and relational trust, which is an ongoing theme for this work. Some other common themes are there's still work to be done. So in the following bullet points are the results of the survey that I sent out recently to staff to say, how am I doing on the things that we identified as priorities for us? So sense of community, forty four percent of staff who responded, and I think the, the end there was, it was like twenty seven out of roughly seventy five staff, so about a third. So forty four percent of the respondents said that there has been improvement, twenty nine said no change and thirty percent said it, sense of community has declined this year. Seventy eight percent of staff who responded said that communication has improved. Eleven percent said no change and eleven percent says it's declined. Administrator presence in the classroom, thirty three percent says, said it has improved. Forty four percent said no change and twenty two percent said declined. And then clear expectations for student learning and behavior, thirty seven percent say that it has improved, forty said, forty one percent said no change and twenty two percent said it declined. So our considerations for next steps are, I really want to continue with the student listening sessions. I'm about to schedule another round of those to wrap up the year in June. And I'm going to continue those next year because I feel like the input that they provide is really valuable and it's, I think it's important for them to have a voice in our school improvement efforts. To, something else is to establish a student advisory panel to the principal. I'd like to see if we can get a group of students to be able to meet with me on a regular basis to share ideas and provide me with feedback about how things are going. I like to continue to gather feedback from the staff related to those areas that I identified earlier, just to make sure that we're continuing to improve on those things. Part of this process, I did listening sessions with parents. I'd like to continue with those. I'd like to, I'd like to have a time dedicated at least once each year to be able to invite parents in and, and have conversations about their thoughts about the direction the school is headed and, and, and any thoughts that they have related to that. And then the plan, the big plan is to take all of the next steps that are identified in the previous sections of this report to develop an action plan for the coming school year. And that is it. Thank you so much for, for listening. That was a lot of information. I, I really appreciate the opportunity to come here and present this to you. It was a, it was a great year of learning and reflection for me. I'm so grateful for all the support I've received and I'm excited for next year. So thank you. Thank you all.
Principal Blanchard, we really appreciate that. A very thoughtful presentation. And I will hand it back over to Kirk. Is there anything else you wanted to share?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Blanchard. We really appreciate the time, effort and energy to put into understanding and knowing your community. Sorry about the truncated evening as, as things have gone a little bit long, but we surely appreciate your efforts. So thank you.
Wonderful. Uh, so our next item on the new business agenda is a CPAC update. And I wonder, Alita, is Pam with us?
No, she sent an email saying that she logged on at six and logged off at seven thirty.
Got it. Okay. So I did, I did let her know that we had executive session first, but because it went so long, it seems she was not able to hang with us. Totally understandable. I can touch base with her separately. Uh, so we are going to move on to our K to five literacy report and I'll hand it over to Kirk to cue this up. I am also keeping my eye on the clock. We have six minutes until we do the up or down, but we have quite a bit left to go, my friends. So in honor of Mike and Karen's last meeting, we're going to just like really hang in here for all of this important work still on the agenda. I hope y'all don't mind. Can I get a thumbs up affirmation that at least you're at home right now? Okay. I'm seeing many thumbs. Dana's drinking her coffee. Thanks Dana. Okay. So Kirk, moving on to our next item, K to five literacy report.
I'm going to turn directly over to Assistant Superintendent Friend. Take it away, Laura.
Waiting and I'm all fumbling with my mouse. I think Alita is going to share the presentation. I would like to thank you Superintendent Downing and thank you to the committee for allowing us an opportunity to provide an update, an exciting update about where we are with our K to five literacy curriculum review process. I would like to thank Laura Padgington, our curriculum director for ELA and social studies for hanging with us and joining with, joining me this evening to present our update and, and even more importantly, engaging and leading all of this great work. We're pleased to share with the committee and update this evening, we have provided for you a report, a full report that encompasses our processes to date as they relate to our curriculum review. And that can be found in the meeting materials. It's also included as a hyperlink within these slides. So much more detail found in their report. This evening, Ms. Padgington and I are going to provide an overview of our phase two process as well as plans for phase three of the process implement. As the committee will remember, Nishoba field tested two high quality curriculum this winter and spring, Witten Wisdom and Imagine Learning EL Education. Included in our presentation overview tonight will be our most recent processes and where those processes have taken us. We're very excited. Next slide. This slide simply serves as a reminder, our curriculum review process was and is predicated on the instructional vision that we developed for K to five literacy by our Nishoba team. And our goal was to select instructional resources to help our teachers lift this vision for our students and their learning into reality and into our classrooms. So this was our driving force throughout our process and continues to be our beacon. Next slide. On this slide, we provide a link to our full report, which includes more specific information about our processes in detail, beginning from phase one. Having previously presented this information about our processes today, this link in this report is just intended to provide all of the information in one place for the committee and for our community. Next slide. As a reminder, our processes and timeline are provided here alongside our timeline for completion. The area highlighted in green is where we are currently and where we are headed in the fall and serves as the focus for tonight's overview. This spring, we spent a considerable amount of time in that phase two select process and Ms. Padgington is going to provide more information about the why we landed on our selection as it relates to the selection process. So we're going to turn it over to Ms. Padgington and Ms. Masterson, you can move into the next slide. Because Ms. Padgington is going to take it from here to talk about our evaluate and select and implement.
Laura. Good evening. We have, as we reported previously, been engaged with a large number of educators from across the district and who worked tirelessly in every phase of this process and we are deeply indebted to their commitment to this work. And as part of our phase two work, we examined the high quality instructional materials that aligned with our instructional vision and our Nishoba priorities that we have previously shared and through our work in phase two, we investigated through field testing in fifteen classrooms across the district in extensive examination of curricular materials, gathering feedback about the resources and the experiences of students and teachers. And we also engaged in visits to four different school districts that have implemented those curricula to give us more of a sense of what it's like in implementation, not just in field testing. Uh, next slide, please. So as a result of phase two, after examining both EL and Witten Wisdom, which are both high quality curricular materials that have strengths and, and either option would have served Nishoba well. And strengths were identified as well as areas where Nishoba's instructional vision would be realized in each curricula. But ultimately through a consensus driven process based on the wide variety of feedback that we gathered throughout all of our work, we ultimately selected Imagine Learning EL Education as our core tier one instructional material for reading, writing, speaking, listening. And some of the strengths that were cited in our, through our process were in terms of reading. It certainly meant our priority of providing complex, authentic knowledge building grade level text for students. We saw explicit instruction in reading, writing and speaking, listening in our language standards. And it was also cited for its accessibility for students and some of the features of the curriculum will allow for a variety of implementations, for example, universally. For example, universally designed lessons and strategies to support uh, multilingual learners along with pacing that is going to support our um, instruction in, in our classrooms for in Nishoba as well. And so we're excited to share a little more about Imagine Learning and EL Education tonight, but also know that a lot more information will be coming as we continue with implementation. Next slide, slide, please. So, um, Imagine Learning EL Education uh, is designed around a read, write, talk, and think framework. And what that means is that throughout the four modules that are found in each grade level, which contain three units, the read, write, talk, think framework has students begin with developing and building background knowledge, both through their use of a variety of different texts, whether it's classroom read-alouds or access to um, individual student texts. Then they extend their reading and their research and close reading and independent reading as they progress through the grade levels in the second unit. And in the third unit, we find an extended writing and performance task. The reading and writing instruction is integrated throughout. Um, so this is something that we're really excited about, that rather than there being a separate reading and writing workshop, the, uh, the natural integration of the two domains happens. And that means that students are writing about what they're reading about and it's going to um, lead to students being able to really demonstrate a lot more of what they learn through all of their access to information in the texts that are part of the curriculum. They're going to be exposed to a wide variety of genres of writing and they'll also have explicit instruction in language skills, which is a high priority for, um, for, for the district. There are some other components to the curriculum that we'll look to down the road that will even further bolster um, what is offered, but we're beginning as is recommended with the implementation of the core module in our first year of implementation. Next slide, please. It's important to note that, um, we also spent a lot of time examining foundational skills, which are obviously so critical. And, uh, Nishoba has had, um, foundations as our core instruction for foundational skills. And as a means of comparison and exploring as part of curriculum review, we also examined the EL Skills Block foundational program. And that was field-tested in classrooms. And while there certainly were things in the program that uh, people who feel tested identified as, as nice. Um, it didn't offer anything that was going to mean that we should change from our current uh, curriculum that we have in, invested in and, and have in our classrooms. Uh, Wilson's Foundations, which is a really high-quality foundational skills curriculum. However, as part of our review, we certainly, uh, worked to identify areas where we could bolster and strengthen the current foundations practices. And we're in the process of those action, of meeting those action steps right now. Ensuring that every teacher has the supplies that they need, providing refresher training as needed. And we're really excited about providing, um, uh, foundations, decodable texts that are aligned with the current foundations. Scope and sequence. And I know that, um, the teachers in the um, early grades are really excited about the decodable texts coming to their classrooms. So we're looking to get those. And, um, we also will be, um, expanding foundations to grade three. Um, not next year, in the following year. And we continue to explore HIGRDI, which is, uh, specific to phonemic awareness, but works, um, to, uh, be integrated into primary grade classrooms. So we have, um, a number of different action steps there that are going to bolster our already, um, really great things that are happening in classrooms, but just make sure that our, our teachers and students have what they need to, to do the best they can. Um, next slide and back to Assistant Superintendent Friend.
Yeah, thank you, Laura. Um, lots of information and thank you for sharing. Um, phase three implements. So the selection and planning of a new curriculum is only as strong as the plans for an effective and successful implementation, which also includes the support and monitoring of that implement, implementation. And so to, to that end, we're committed. Um, we've identified and shared some immediate next steps that will be happening now and through the summer here for you and into the fall. Plans for these have either happened or are fully underway. And those include targeted training and professional development for our educators through um, the support from EL and our instructional coaches and Laura and myself. Um, as well as the importance of communicating with our families about what this new literacy curriculum means, how it will look and how they can support their children at home. So to that end, um, Laura and I have been, um, developing, thinking around in all you need to know for our families. Uh, plans are underway for our family night in September. And of course, we're going to support our educators during open house and curriculum night in the fall. Um, as well with information because we know that our partners have been supportive of our process. And, um, and they're partners in learning for our students and, and their children. So bringing them in and making sure that we're communicating with them about this new exciting curriculum and what that means for Nishoba is really important to us. And so plans are underway for our family engagement piece there. And then finally, last slide. In, in the end, we're excited about our new steps and what they mean for our students and for our educators. We know that we have a great amount of work ahead. We're incredibly thankful for the hard work of our curriculum committee, our field testers and all those in between. And we are confident in our processes so far. And we're really excited about our next steps. We're especially, I am especially thankful. We are especially thankful for the leadership of Laura Padgington, the support of Superintendent Downing, Finance and Operations Director, Mr. Ross Mok Karen, to our school commu- community and for supporting our curriculum efforts on behalf of Nishoba and to you, our school committee for your support, um, for our current and for our future students. It's gonna have a great impact and we're really, really excited uh, about the launch, as is our, as are our teachers. So thank you.
Thank you, Laura, Laura, and the entire team that you listed at the beginning. There's a really fantastic group of people doing this work. Uh, so that wraps that up, my friends. Does anybody have any quick comments or questions for Laura? All right. So seeing none, Laura, thank you again for that. And we wish you the best of luck as you roll that out over the summer and into the fall. Our kids will benefit.
Thank you.
Uh, so without objection, I am hoping that the school committee will allow me to bump the quorum, quorum rule discussion to our next meeting. Seeing none. Uh, we will bump that to the next agenda item. I'm also wondering if Sharon will, uh, humor me here and allow us to move the school committee manual presentation to the June fifth organizational meeting as well. Thanks, Sharon. And as long as there's no objection from the rest of the committee, we'll do that. And we've already announced to the community the need for Dear J volunteers. So moving on to finance and operations. Um, so I'm wondering if Kirk, do you think, is there anything here that is movable or do we need to just power through these things?
Uh, I will defer to Mr. Mok Karen on that.
If you can do it quick, Ross, I'm sure, which I'm sure you can. You can go kind of one at a time.
Um, I will deliver brevity as much as possible.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, as far as the April operations report, this includes a better estimate of our, um, projected expenditures as you know, as the year ticks, ticks on here. Nothing is significant of change. This was reviewed with budget and warrant, uh, last week. So if there's uh, any questions, I can take them. Otherwise, certainly we can move on to the next agenda item.
Any questions? All right, everyone. So, um, Ross, just really quick from me. Uh, when do you, when do you actually close everything out and present to us the end of year report?
You will get the end of the year operations report, not to be confused with the DSS, the end of the year report. But the end of year operations report will be probably October, um, unless there's time in September, but we're still cleaning things up with regards to open POs over the summer and rollovers and things like that. So.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thanks to Budget and Warrant too for looking this over. So let's move on.
Great. Uh, so again, I'm gonna try to use, uh, efficiency here. Um, there's a significant contract, uh, for discussion. Uh, but thanks for the opportunity to provide you an update on the procurement of food service management. Um, so our goal this evening is your approval of the execution of this contract by the administration. Uh, the last meeting I shared that we received three proposals, all from reputable firms. Um, I did provide a memo in anticipation of questions from school committee. I hope that was informative. I'm just gonna quickly touch on a couple of things and maybe expand. Um, this is a draft, this template, uh, is required by DSS um, through the RFP and all the way through the execution of contract. There's a great deal of oversight. Um, to ensure that there's adherence to governmental laws, regulations, guidelines, standards, et cetera, when it comes to food services. So, um, I've done a lot of communication with DSS, uh, nutrition services over this. Uh, this contract has been reviewed by our legal counsel, both Attorney Mello and also Attorney Rhodes, who does, uh, more deep dives on contractual language, uh, was reviewed by him as well. And our legal counsel has provided, uh, motion language as well for this evening, which we will uh, get to at the end of my, my short and brief explanation. So again, the contract does not change the employment of any kitchen staff as we continue to hire, retain and work with those individuals under the Unit C collective bargaining agreement. It's a one-year contract with options to renew. Um, based on the evaluation criteria and DSS prescribed methods, um, we are looking to, uh, award this contract to Whitson's Culinary Group. Um, it does guarantee a return to the district of four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in, um, or excuse me, four hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars for the first year of the contract. Uh, less what we have built in for offsets of a hundred and sixty thousand. You're looking at approximately a surplus at the end of the year of two hundred and eighty thousand. So, um, a couple of things that I want to point out, uh, this would, uh, allow us to work with them with not just the food service manager, um, component, which is very administrative, but also have them bring in a chef manager to work in our kitchens and with our kitchen staff on all manner of things when it comes to variety, innovation, um, efficiency of kitchens, all those types of things. And also provides for a part-time sustainability manager. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. Um, we do also have within the contract that they need to form an implemented advisory board, which would consist of students, parents, staff. Um, and the purpose of that is to develop our school nutrition program. So yesterday I had the great opportunity to visit Whitson's Food Services, uh, in the Lexington schools, both at the high school and one of the elementary schools accompanying me were two of our kitchen managers and the parent representative who served on the proposal evaluation team. So I think I've seen thousands of school lunches in my time, uh, and I truly believe that this is probably one of the best, uh, possible things I've seen when it comes to school nutrition. Um, and it's definitely the, the best possible direction for our students. Uh, we saw some amazing things happening with a variety of options, nutrition at the forefront, forefront. And there's some really great work that they've done with sustainability partnerships in the community, uh, when it comes to composting, recycling and supply choices. So the feedback that I received from the kitchen managers and the parent rep was positive and similar in sentiments. These people are experts in school nutrition and food services within schools. Uh, they'll work in tandem with our kitchen teams, our administration, our community and students to develop and implement a vision for school nutrition for Nishoba in the future. Um, there's obviously a significant amount of change and transition that comes with this, but we'll, we'll be off and running, uh, prior uh, to July one, uh, if we move forward with the contract and then really get into it over the summer, uh, and be ready to start up at the beginning of the school year. So again, uh, the, this evening, the district's looking for approval of the award of the food services management contract to Whitson's Culinary Group as set forth in the district's RFP and that the contract is subject to any final written contract terms that would be acceptable to the superintendent and district legal counsel. And lastly, that's the superintendent be authorized to execute such a contract in the, uh, the district's behalf.
Amy Cohen, can I lean on you to start with a motion before we move to discussion? Yep, she's getting it.
Yep. Um, I move that the committee vote to approve the award of a food services management contract to Whitson's Culinary Group on the term set forth in the district's request for proposal contract issued on.
The contract start date would be July one.
Thank you. July one, two thousand twenty-four. And Whitson's Culinary Group's proposal in response there too, is subject to final written contract terms acceptable to the superintendent and district legal counsel and authorize the superintendent to execute such contract on the district's behalf.
All right, everyone. So that was a long motion. It is in the chat for you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Joe. Any discussion on this contract? Joe?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Sharon. First and foremost, I want to just thank Superintendent Downing and Mr. Mok Karen for, I, I know you had our school council look it over this and you offered me, uh, an opportunity to kick it around a little bit myself. And I apologize, uh, my schedule this week was such that I wasn't able to spend any time uh, extensive amount of time looking over that document. Um, not that you pay me to do it anyways, but um, my question though is, um, just, and it's, 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 it's a very just minor procedural matter. The, the document you presented us, Ms. Mok Karen, it's, the, the contract starts actually after your, your memorandum. Your memorandum isn't incorporated into the contract, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the only thing I just noticed on the contract, you, you start off with the FSMC, and I know this is a draft. So when the final version of the contract is prepared, will you, will they be replacing the FSMC, the Food Service Management Corporation with the name Whitson's? Because FSMC is no, it's not defined in the body of the contract. It's in your memorandum, but.
Yeah. So you'll also notice that that starts on, I think, page twenty-one, maybe. And the previous pages are the posted RFP. So at some point within there, you're absolutely correct that it would note, it would note that Whitson's is the FSMC and the SFA is in Nishoba Regional School District. That is correct.
And the CN is a child nutrition program?
Uh, yeah, I need to maybe double check that one, but yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Madam Sharon.
Did, did I miss, did we get the opportunity to review the document, the contract?
Uh, it's in the meeting materials.
Which document?
This would be the food service contract.
Oh, I see. So it's all the, I missed all the pages after the memo. Okay. So what is, it talks about guaranteed return of four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. What's being returned to us?
So that would be, uh, think of it as all of the reimbursements, the reimbursements, the reimbursable meals, plus any revenues that come in through à la carte, those types of things. Less our labor costs, their costs, procurement costs. Equipment costs, those types of things. And the, the remaining amount is four forty-one. We have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in offsets in the budget. So four forty-one less one sixty puts us at about two eighty, um, which is under the allowable threshold for, um, ongoing surplus within food service. As dictated by the state. So this would also be them working with us and spending down our existing surplus. Um, I know that I've talked about this in the past. What they'll be able to do is to really work with us on vision and making sure that we have continuity across all of our kitchens and our cafeterias. Um, not just in terms of menus, but also experience for students.
Uh, Amy Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm really happy to learn that a sustainability manager is gonna be part of this agreement and that someone will have responsibility for looking at ways to reduce waste and incorporate composting. Cause I know that there have been initiatives in the past that have tried to do this and haven't really gotten anywhere because there's just no one had time or bandwidth to, to take it on. So.
Yeah. And I, I think what we saw in Lexington was obviously multiple years of work being put in, not just by uh, Whitson's, but by the community members as well and working with local green teams and, 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 you know, the school. So it will take time, um, but having a focused effort in bringing expertise to the table and putting these things together and the outreach to, you know, local boards is really important.
And also add that I'm glad to hear that there the advisory board is something that is worked in, that includes parents, the end users, the end users. I know that Whitson's works at my school and they work with our student council to. Kind of obtain feedback and and react to it and and kind of address. Not only the nutritional needs, but also um trying to improve the experience. And so I look forward to seeing more of that. Any other questions? All right, uh, our discussion, I should say, there's a motion on the floor. So seeing no more discussion, we're going to take a vote to accept the contract. I vote yes. Mike Horish.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Shondor.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Amy Vessels.
Yeah.
Jackie.
Yes.
And Karen.
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks for that, Ross. Let's move on to the next. Yeah, that's great. Let's move on to the next piece about food service rates.
Yep, as uh mentioned last uh, the last meeting, uh, we're bringing these forward for today. Um, and we're just seeking your approval for these rates.
Nice. So. Um. I'm so sorry. Amy, do you have a motion for this?
I don't see one, but I can make one.
I don't see one either. Um, Ross, it, this is something that you need a vote on.
Correct. So the motion would essentially be um approval of food services rates presented for FY twenty-five.
Amy?
Yeah, I moved to accept the um. Food, the proposed fiscal year twenty-five NRSC school nutrition rates as presented.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll stick the vote. I vote yes. Mike. He said yes. Scott.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And Karen.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. So the next item items here are some pretty amazing grants. And so, um. Ross, why don't you tee them up and then Amy can give us a motion?
Yes, thank you. Um, and super assistant superintendent friend may add in uh if necessary. Um, the the first one is the skills capital technology equipment grant. Uh. This is through the executive office of education, not DSE, um, but they still work in tandem and similar systems. So. In short, this ties right into our advanced manufacturing and engineering pathway. Uh, that we've talked about and was presented by Mr. Anandopoulos at the last, or excuse me. A couple of months ago at school committee, um, and is a major piece of the innovation happening at the high school. Um, so what we're looking for tonight is approval of the grant in total of seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Which includes a significant amount of equipment and upgrades um. To those current rooms, um, and obviously anything um that would continue would go on to the the next building as well. Um, I would like to thank Mr. Andy LeBlanc for doing a lot of the legwork on uh. Understanding what's available, what's out there and what's needed in doing the research and putting together um essentially what is the the budget for this grant. Thank you.
Amy, would you like to give us a motion?
Sure, I moved to accept the FC thirty TC skills capital grant as presented in accordance with school committee policy DD.
I'm going to second that. Any discussion on this grant? Shondor?
I just see there drones in there and want to make sure that the district complies with FAA regulations. For part one oh seven and the rest of it, uh, the use of drones.
So noted. I'm sure that um Kirk, you'll take note of that FAA regulation. Thank you, Shondor. What would we do without you? Not sure. Any other comments or questions? All right, everybody, let's take the vote on this very large and important grant. I vote yes. Mike.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yeah.
Jackie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, let us know about the second one, Ross.
Yes, uh, thank you. So um, this is for Project Lead the Way. This is a grant. Uh, although the the money will not come uh into the district and be expended on, it's still a grant nonetheless that we're taking part in. Um, and this again will uh support programming at the high school. Um, and uh, this is through their engineering. Um, uh, subsection, I don't, assistant superintendent friend would use a better term than me on that one. Um, but essentially this is the engineering side of the uh Project Lead the Way grant. Uh, and the total is sixteen thousand dollars covering participation fees and training.
Go on. Uh, Amy, a motion?
Yeah, I moved to accept the project lead the way grant as presented in accordance with the school committee policy DD.
I second that. Any discussion? Yeah, Sha- uh, Jackie?
I was just curious if this is going to support the innovation pathways to any extent.
Ross or Kirk?
I would turn that over to assistant superintendent friend.
Laura?
Yes, yes, the answer is yes. Um, well, uh, and um, and and not exclusive. To the students enrolled in our pathways too. So we're we're beginning with two courses and then we'll be looking at adding two. Two courses the following year. So this grant will support the training and the materials for our educators to get that going.
Laura, does Project Lead the Way exist in Nishoba High School right now?
No.
Oh.
No, not yet, but it will.
Awesome. Yeah, I don't know why I didn't know that. So, okay, so this is a part of the innovation pathways. Uh, continuing on with that.
Yeah. And we'll also um count towards an advanced coursework component of innovation pathways too. Um, which has higher ed and positive implications for higher ed. So we're excited about that potential for our students as well.
Fantastic. All right, any other discussion? All right, let's take a vote on this grant. I vote yes. Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, guys, that is it for finance operations. Thank you very much, Ross, for that incredibly succinct uh rundown.
Because that was supposed to be done at eight twenty. My apologies.
Not your fault. Uh, so on to unfinished business. We have the very important. Summit of evaluation of our superintendent Kirk Downing and. Um, as you guys know, this is in the meeting materials. We had each individual member of the school committee com. By regulation, complete and individual evaluation of the superintendent based upon um his self-evaluation. We then had the personnel subcommittee meet to discuss and compile a composite. But the lion chair was done by the brilliant Sharon Park. Uh, she has posted that composite. Uh, thank you so much. Goes out to you, Sharon, because. Man, that's a lot of work and we really appreciate you taking that on. So everybody, um, this is something that we do take a vote on and I am going to lean on Amy Co- well. Maybe i- is there anybody who has any um commentary? Because you are concerned about the content of the composite evaluation, you would like something kind of significantly changed. All right, so for anyone who has not reviewed, anybody in the community who's still watching and hasn't reviewed this uh composite report. You should know that we have um completed the evaluation and we have assigned to our superintendent the rating of exemplary. And um, that is now going to be what is up for vote. And so Amy, can I lean on you for a motion on the eval?
Yes, I. Move to approve the composite NRSC summative superintendent evaluation report as presented. The overall summative performance of exemplary will be reported to DSE.
I second that. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, Amy, go ahead.
Well, I I should defer to Superintendent Downing to go.
Uh, Kirk, would you like to make a small comment here?
Well, I'm I'm humbled by that rating and many of the comments and the evaluation. I just have to put into the record that when we talk about exemplary, we're talking about the work of a multitude of people. That have been advancing the work of the district and um certainly I recognize that my job is to facilitate, guide, lead. And promote that vision, but it's the people, it's the people of our school system that make great things happen. So. I think the evaluation you're providing is an evaluation of of just continued progress. And that's our goal here in your show, but to always get better every year. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, I just want the public record to note that some of the language in in the evaluation, I know we're short on time. And I wanted to commend Sharon for pulling together the compilation. Um, so eloquently and succinctly in capturing all of our thoughts, but. You know, the summary says that we are fortunate to have a transformative and visionary leader in Superintendent Downing. And that he works tirelessly um on behalf of our district to drive innovative growth, positive change for our students, teachers, families and communities. Um. He seeks connections with students, with teachers and staff, with families and throughout the community. And we note that. Um, it goes on to note how many ways he's gone to improve practices throughout the district. And I just want to. Um, make sure that the public heard those words. So. That's all.
And I do know that in my convers- my weekly conversation um with Kirk that. You guys should also know and the community should know that. Um, this is not all rainbows and. You know, flowers. There's a lot of feedback in this evaluation that continues to. Uh, push the envelope for our kids and for our school district and Kirk is one hundred percent. Up to the challenge of, you know, how we can get even better next year. And that that will kind of draw, as always, the cycle of inquiry requires us to use what we've done this year and the feedback that has been given. To set goals for the following year. And that is the job of the personnel subcommittee over the summer. And uh, working with Kirk to kind of set the bar one more time. In that aspirational zone that we so appreciate uh Kirk living in. So. If there's no further debate, we're going to take the vote? All right, so um, on the motion to accept the evaluation, I vote yes. Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Karen? Thank you, guys. Uh, moving on, we have the second reading of the parent communication policy, which has been worked on so diligently by our policy subcommittee and. Our administrative team. And so Amy Vessels, could you just um kind of tee this up for us, what we, what we're being asked to accept here tonight?
Uh, yes, so there was only.
Did I lose her?
You may have.
Bomber. Kirk, do you know what she, do you possibly know what she was about to say?
Yeah, there are two adjustments that we made. Uh, there was a piece in the um. Forty-eight hour response, we removed the words teaching and learning because there may be topics that. Go beyond just the teacher and learning that was put in there because health and safety were put into another category, but we thought that made it simple. Um, and then the other clause, there was a clause stricken out around confidentiality. We actually do use email for confidentiality and we're actually looking at at systems for. For instance, IEPs can be sent electronically and those are confidential documents. So eliminating. Confidential documents through the use of email just wouldn't make sense operationally. So we removed that clause from there as well.
All right, so Amy's back. Thank you Kirk for filling in the gap there. Amy, Kirk just identified the two um changes that you made. Did you want to add anything?
Uh, no, those were the only changes that we made based on people's feedback.
Excellent. Joe, a question?
Yeah, I'd said a quick question regarding interpretation of the policy. Uh, it's the provision regarding uh safety concerns and it says that messages regarding student safety shall receive an acknowledgement of receipt. And be forwarded to the supervising administrator for appropriate action. Um. I I'm just curious as to perhaps what the superintendent or even the policy subcommittee's interpretation that is. Does this provision fall under the forty-eight hour regulation or would it? So if there's a suit, just so I'm clear, if a safety concern is raised. And it's sent to a particular staff member, they have forty-eight hours to acknowledge receipt and then turn that over to. The supervising administrator for appropriate action. Is that the intent of this provision?
That, no, the intent is upon receiving an email. Regarding health and safety, there would be an immediate acknowledgement, doesn't necessarily mean a response or or I mean a uh resolution. But acknowledgement and forwarded to the administrator, because we don't, you know, uh, so for instance, um. You know, if somebody would notice of harming themselves, we want to act on it quickly.
May I, may I follow up, Madam Chair?
Please.
Yeah, no, so I I agree with you, Kirk. I I that would be my interpretation as well, but you said that. You added the word immediate before acknowledgement. It doesn't say, it says receive an acknowledgement of receipt. Um. Perhaps the policy subcommittee would, are we gonna, I'm sorry, are we voting on this tonight, Madam Chair?
We are, yeah, we are.
Would would the policy subcommittee be objectionable to my suggesting an amendment to that provision? It just says. Instead of receive an acknowledgement, to receive an immediate acknowledgement, was that, is that a fair? Characterization of what the policy stands for?
Kirk?
Uh, perhaps it's i- immediate to. What's tricky is, you know, email. Isn't like a phone call that rings in your ears. You have to go to your email to see the communication, which makes it tricky. So. Uh, perhaps uh Attorney Gleason, it can read something the effect of uh acknowledgement upon uh reading the email or upon reading the communication. Something in that vein?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody, um, can I get a thumbs up if everybody is okay with inserting that small detail? Jackie? Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions? So I um would like a motion from Amy Cohen. Is it on there? Okay.
I think so, um. It's not, but I can make one.
Yeah, let's do it.
Uh, I move to approve. Policy. I am JDE. Regarding parent caregiver communication response as presented and amended tonight.
I will second that. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the uh, the motion should uh include the language that Superintendent Downing had suggested.
Oh.
I believe the motion is as presented.
I said as presented and amended, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. I apologize.
That's all right.
That's enough, Joe?
I I'm sorry. Yeah, I I didn't hear that. I apologize.
No, it's okay. All right, everybody, I'm not seeing any other discussion. So um, this is a huge work. Uh, and I am so appreciative of Amy Vessels and Kirk pushing this with their committee. Uh, through legal counsel and even through um all of Kirk's contacts, it has been. A fantastic collaboration and I think that it will do great things, not only for our staff members, giving them some clarity, but also for our kids. So thanks so much. Uh, I vote yes. Mike? Mike said yes. Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Karen? She said yes, and Amy Vessels?
Yeah.
All right, everybody, uh, flying now. Let's go over to the district physician contract.
Madam Chair, just real quick, I just want the committee to know that we'll be uh reviewing this policy with the entire administrative council to our August retreat. So they can include it in their uh opening presentations of our faculty and staff to set the tone for the school year.
Excellent. Um, Amy, we are looking to take a vote on the district physician contract. Can you start us off with a motion?
Yes, um. I'll move to authorize the superintendent to sign the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Think this is supposed to say FY physicians. Contract between the district and. I think this is supposed to say FY Physicians Contract between the district and Dr. Russell Coleman. Dr. Coleman will receive a five thousand dollar stipend under the terms of the contract.
Amy, that's SY for school year.
Ah. School year, okay, let me read it again. I move to authorize the superintendent to sign the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year physicians contract between the district and Dr. Russell Coleman. Dr. Coleman will receive a five thousand dollar stipend under the terms of the contract.
Second that. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Amy.
I didn't see the, in the meeting materials.
What's in that in last week's meeting materials?
Mm-hmm. It was presented in last week's materials.
Ah, that's fine. Got it.
Uh, and then, yeah, and you weren't present, so I think, right? Oh, bummer. Um, Kirk, did it, the stipend, does that uh represent an increase? I can't remember.
No, that is level and I checked it with Dr. Coleman prior to the meeting as well. And so Dr. Coleman agrees.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Alright, let's take a vote. I vote yes. Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Karen? Amy Vessels?
Yeah.
Alright, everybody, fantastic. Thank you for that. Let's move on to the handbook vote and Amy, perhaps you can put forth a motion.
I move to approve the NRHS School Year twenty-four slash twenty-five Handbook as presented on May eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
I second that. Any discussion on the presentation we heard last time? Seeing none, let's take the vote. I vote yes. Mike? He said yes. Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yeah.
Excellent. So uh, thank you to Dr. Boynton for putting that forward and all that hard work. Let's move on to the next piece, which is the Director of Early Childhood. Um, Amy, do you have a motion for this?
Yes, I move to approve the job description for the Director of Early Childhood as presented on May eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
I second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's take the vote. I vote yes. Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Amy V. Frozen. Are you frozen, Amy Vessels? Darn. Um, so we'll, she'll have to abstain. Let's go now to our last piece here. It is the School Committee Goals Check-ins via Subcommittee Report. Here is what I'm thinking. And if I get a thumbs up from everyone, I will do this for you. Could each chair, as a final act of this um term, this school committee term, could each chair, please send me your um kind of goal reflection that you were gonna share tonight? I will type it into the spreadsheet that is on the meeting materials. And then um make this uh, the, I'll kind of share it with the committee on the fifth at the organizational meeting. And then this is the document that will drive our goal setting in August. Would that be okay for the Subcommittee Chairs? Do I have a thumbs up on that to just have you guys send me? Don't type it into the spreadsheet, just send it to me. Alright, I'm not seeing anybody shaking their head violently, so good. Alright, so let's move on to our Subcommittee Reports. And um, if there is no report, that is fine, but I'm just gonna run through them really quickly. You tell me. Uh, to our Budget and Warrant Chairman, is there anything to report, Mike?
We have a massive report uh this evening, which will last somewhere around fifty-two or fifty-three minutes. Uh, our last, our last meeting uh was uh on May the fourteenth. We uh evaluated progress towards the goals, which will email you. Um, we uh provided uh feedback from the FY twenty-five budget book. Oh, oh, and um, Madam Chair, we also have a um recommendation to revise our warrant signature protocol. Could, should I just include that now as part of the report?
Yeah, and so why don't you give us the heads up on what you want to change and then we can vote on the fifth?
Right, so the the tension is that um the outgoing chair of the Budget Warrant Subcommittee, uh, actually, there there will be no chair at the end of this year. Um, and so warrants still have to be signed over the summer, so we want to um modify the language so that the uh chair of the school committee, as voted uh in the organizational media uh meeting can sign off on warrants for the summer until a new chair for Budget Warrant is uh is voted on at the beginning of next year.
Excellent. So we'll include that in the June fifth planning calendar. Alita, would you mind putting that on the planning calendar for me for June fifth? That we need to modify the warrant signature protocol we developed? And uh, thank you for that, Mike. Anything else from Budget and Warrant? Alright, so uh, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say a final thank you for all of your time and energy and effort. Not only on Budget and Warrant, but uh everywhere you go with regard to school committee. This is your last meeting and we want you to know how appreciative we are. So uh, everybody give Mike a big heart or an applause. He's the best, Mike.
Thank you.
Um, so over to Communication, uh, other than the School Committee Manual, anything to report, Sharon?
No, nothing to report. Um, the School Committee Manual is in the meeting materials, so people can look at it. However, I realized that um I sent it as read only, and that meant that my comments, um, so the manual has comments alongside of it telling you where to find the um comparable section in the existing manual. And those don't show up in the version that I had Alita post to the meeting materials. So I'm not quite sure how to do that. I have to figure that out and then I'll make sure that people can get those notes as well.
Yeah, I totally understand what you're saying. So yeah, let me know if you need any help with that.
And I can do that for you.
Okay, thanks.
I'll just post it as a Google link instead of a PDF.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so then um.
Was it a Word doc or a Google doc?
It was a Google doc. But I, I changed it so that it was view only, so that it couldn't be altered by mistake. And I didn't realize that that would take the comments out of it.
Just share it with Us as a PDF.
Yeah.
Make Alita an editor and she can work her magic.
Okay.
Madam Chair, cause I was gonna say that we just had a discussion last week about deliberations through a Google doc and that will prevent that. So um, Ms. Masterson can work on it.
Karen, I'll add Alita right now, okay? I'm sorry, what?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Karen.
Perfect. Alright, thank you guys for that, all that work. We will um discuss that uh, on the fifth. Uh, School Building Committee, any updates, Joe?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. Uh, the Building Committee met on May sixteenth. It was a very short ministerial meeting. Uh, site-enabling work is ongoing. Our groundbreaking is scheduled for June seventh and our next meeting is scheduled for June twentieth. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Personnel, anything else, Sharon, that you'd like to add?
No other updates.
Yeah, and one more time, thanks so much for doing all of that work with the evaluation. Great job. Uh, over to Policy. Amy Vessels, anything else? I know that you're still fast at work. Anything that you want to share?
Nope, just that we're gonna have a lot to do at the beginning of next um, next school year. Uh, in terms of looking at these changes to these policies and um going to them.
Amazing, and I am not gonna forget that you told me on the side that you wouldn't mind doing policy again. God bless you. Um, alright, let's go over to our Advisory Committees. Um, Dana actually had to um, take off, she had some family stuff that she was managing with her little, so audit advisory will have to wait. But please know that um she is working hard on that and alongside Ross to move toward a new auditor potentially and establish that timeline. So Ross, I know we're exchanging some emails at one point, so we'll just keep going with that. Um, so over to Jackie for DRJ.
I just wanted to say, I know that we already had the brief um update regarding the people who are being put forth um from our community and from the current uh DRJ members. Um, they've met multiple times to kind of review their existing documents um in preparation for the presentation at our next meeting. And so I know that that was a lot of work and looking forward to seeing their presentation with you all on the fifth.
That's great. Thank you so much.
And I also are we taking like recommendations? Just kidding, I was gonna say, I also love being on policy with Amy.
Ah, wonderful. That's awesome. Yay. Um, so I will keep that in mind. At the um June fifth organizational meeting, we do have a survey for all of the members of the new committee to kind of um assert their preferences. So that is to be decided. Um, let's go to our final advisory and that is CPAC and Karen.
No report. CPAC was going to um present tonight, but we got really behind. So hopefully um that will be rescheduled soon so they can, they can share what they've been working on um directly with the committee.
Thanks, Karen. And I would be remiss if I let us adjourn without saying equally to you how appreciative we are of your work. And um, we are gonna really miss you on School Committee. This is your last meeting as well. And again, just thank you so much for everything that you've done and all of your expertise lending it to the committee and to the Shoba Public Schools. So. Yay, Karen.
Thank you for making my last my longest.
I know, it's like some COVID era level meeting minutes here. Um, so thank you, everybody, for hanging in there. Items for next agenda are pretty well set on the planning calendar. If there's anything you want to add, just reach out to me. Um, and before I move to adjourn, I want to say one more time, thanks to Mike Horish and Karen Devine for all their service. Great job, guys. We'll miss ya. Stay in touch.
Thanks, everyone.
Uh, so I'm gonna move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Scott. Um, and let's take a vote on that. I vote yes. Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Jackie?
If I say no, will they stay? I don't know. Yeah.
They won't.
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy, but uh Vessels?
Yeah.
And Amy Cohen?
Yes, I guess so.